I'd like to welcome everybody for being here tonight and thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come for the first ALS Town Hall meeting. My name is Harry Breen, I'm chairman of the ALS Florida Chapter. One of the things that I wanted to do tonight is to, transparency is very important. When I was appointed chair back in the spring of last year, the first thing I wanted to do is make sure that we had our constituency able to understand what we're doing. This information that you're going to hear about tonight, a lot of it is transparent, is on the web, from 990 forms to the audit. What we thought tonight was very important was to give you an opportunity, because you can't ask questions to the internet, to ask questions to us, anything you want to know about what we're doing and what we can do better. So tonight, we're going to talk about the association. Our president, Kim Hannah, is going to start. Kim?
Thank you, Hiram. And thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate you taking the time. I want to start on an overarching aspect and talk about our vision and our mission before we go into what we do and where our money is spent. And the first thing to know is our vision is very, very simple. Create a world without ALS. Our mission is simple, too. Leading the fight to treat and cure ALS through global research and nationwide advocacy, while also empowering people with Lou Gehrig's disease and their families to live fuller lives by providing them with compassionate care and support. This mission is a mission that is shared among the 41 chapters that make up our organization. Our national office has a piece of it, and we have a piece of it. And together, we work in tandem to make sure that this mission is delivered. Want to share our core values very quickly? I'm not going to read through these in full, just going to hit on them, because I think that it's important to always remember that we are a value-based organization, and that we work within these values. First one is that people with ALS and their families come first. Also, scientific credibility and innovation. Those are the hallmarks of our research program. Commitment to excellence. We are one team with one vision and one mission. Collaboration and partnership. Integrity, honesty, and ethical behavior. Mutual respect. Diversity of ideas. And financial strength. Without financial strength, we will not be able to achieve our goals. I just want to go over real quick also our strategic plan. These are the mission priorities that are developed on a nationwide level, and then we, as a chapter, develop our own strategic plan in order to implement these. Again, that way, we are working in tandem. So our mission priority number one: Raise the level of awareness. Two: Lead, direct, and collaborate on global research. Three: Provide every person with ALS and their families access to high-quality services. Four: Advance a nationwide advocacy program. Five: Function as one organization with one unity of purpose. And six: Operate within a business model designed to ensure stability and promote financial strength. Again, it's only through financial strength that we will achieve our goals. Does anybody have any question on our vision, mission, values, or strategic plan? Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about our care services. So before we go into where the money is spent, I want to talk about, or how the money is spent, I want to talk about what we do very quickly. This slide shows our penetration of the state of Florida in 2000, in the year 2000. You can see the counties that are highlighted in beige were the counties that we were serving in the year 2000. Take a look at today, the entire state. I think that's an incredible accomplishment for this chapter. The next chart shows our growth in chapter census. If you look at the blue, green, and red lines, you can see how we have grown in helping more and more pals every year. But I think the next slide really shows that in a very concise manner. In 2001, we were serving 146 pals. In 2005, we were serving more, about 400 and something, and we did that with three care services managers. Between 2005 and 2008, you can see the incredible growth. By the end of 2009, we were at almost 800 patients, and we were doing that with six care services managers. Since that time, we are now helping almost 1,000 patients, over 900, and we have not hired any additional care services managers. I think that's a testament to our staff, to their dedication, and to the hard work that they do on very limited resources. The next slide shows how, in our strategic plan, we take those mission priorities of our national organization, and then we make them into our own strategic plan. And this is in order to serve the people in the state of Florida. And this slide shows what our care services goals are in the state of Florida, how we have implemented that mission to serve pals in a high-quality manner. So, and you'll see it, it really does go hand-in-hand in tandem with our national function. The next shows how our services really intertwine. And this chart is important to me, because it really shows the two things that make up our program. The column on the left, titled "Cares," all of those things listed, assessment, consultation, education, advocacy, support groups, those are services that are provided, because we have people to provide them. The column on the right are all of the very tangible things that we do for patients. We provide them with equipment. We provide them with money for respite care. We provide them with money for home or van modifications, those types of services. One cannot exist without the other. If we did not have people, we would not be able to know what we needed to do to help pals in that very tangible way. The column down the middle shows kind of how it all comes together, all those other things we do. The research, the clinic care, working with the clinics, educating healthcare providers, our volunteer program, our Surviving Spouses program, kids' care, all of those things that really, like the bottom says, make a difference. And the final slide shows, it's our dashboard, and it shows really in numbers what we do. So for the last year, this is 2012 to 2013, you can see the first column says "Total Care Coordinators Engagements." This is the number of times a pal has asked for help and we have responded, and that's 20,860 times. I think that's an incredible number, again, a testament to the hard work and dedication of our staff. Another number I find very impressive is the respite hours provided, 3,561. Again, that's with real tangible dollars to provide respite care for pals. So you can see how this all works together, staff and dollars, and dollars to pay staff in order to fulfill this mission. I think that one of the important things in one of our materials, this is an example of our case statement, which talks about what we do and how we raise money and where we put the money. And I think right on the cover, it sums up what we do and how we approach our mission. Until there is a cure, there is care. So yes, research is important. We are looking, we are helping to fund research, but until that happens, we are a patient-centric chapter, providing care to the pals that we serve. Does anybody have any questions about the services that we provide? In addition to being patient-centric, we also, we say we cover all bases. Patient care, awareness, advocacy, and research. And our money is divided over those, that spectrum. It's not divided equally, but it is divided. Okay, I want to talk a little bit now about how we spend our money. And everybody should have a 990. If you picked one up, if you don't have one, raise your hand, and maybe Patty would bring you one. Okay, Patty?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so I've given, I've just picked out three pages from the 990, because we would have a whole several-hour seminar on going through the whole 990. So the first page is the first page of our 990. If you look online, 12, total revenue, you can see this year, we were at $1.74 million per chapter. All of those funds were donated funds. We do not charge patients for anything. So the more money we raise, the more money we have to give to patients, and the more money we have for research. Then on expenses, if you look at line 18, total expenses, $1,800, meaning that we spent $107,000 more than we brought in last year. On the second page, let's talk about where that money went, what we spent it on. Just to get you oriented, the first column is a column that is total expenses. Then the next three columns show program service expenses, management and general expenses, and fundraising expenses. We're going to focus on column B, the program service column. The first number, and I'm not going to go through all the numbers here, but the first number you see is $80,000 for grants and other assistance. That's that direct tangible care that we just talked about. Respite care, money for home modifications, that's how much we were able to give out to patients. The next two lines you see, $551,000 and $87,000, are salaries and employee benefits. That's that column that we talked about on the left, that's the people side. Remember, our program is half people, it's more than half people, and then some actual funds to be able to grant to patients. We can't do that without having the people that are out there doing those services that I just talked about. I think the best way to really say that is that our program, that our salaries are our program. That's, you know, the way that we have decided here in the state of Florida to fulfill our mission, by having care services managers make a home visit, do an assessment, see what the patient needs. I travel the state, talking to patients and to donors, and 100% of the time, when I talk to a patient, they will tell me that when their care services manager showed up at their house, it was like an angel had come. And that is really true, because of the depth of services that we're able to provide, and just hold their hands as they walk through a very, very scary time. So let's not discount what those salaries go to when we talk about our care services managers. They are the most important component of this mission. The numbers that you will see following that are kind of just our operating expenses. You know, we try to keep those down, we're always looking for ways to get them down further. But a lot of that is kind of fixed cost, you know? It costs us to be in this building. It costs money to have IT these days, you know? There are many costs that just, that they are. The more money we make, these don't go up, so the better off we are. I do want to draw your attention to the bottom, line 24, and then there's A through E. The first one is our revenue share to national. We pay 13.7% of our revenue to our national office. A portion of that goes into the national, into the research program, and a portion funds their operation of operating a nationwide organization. The services that they provide back to the chapter, it's well worth it. I mean, we really are heavily supported in order to provide our mission, both on the care services side and the fundraising side. The next expense is the Walk to Defeat ALS. The total expense in column A is $147,000. Now realize, our walks raise over $1 million every year. We spend 10 cents to 14 cents on the dollar. We don't spend 50 cents, we don't spend 25 cents, we spend between 10 and 14. The most we've ever spent in the time that I have been here in three years has been, I think, 14 cents on the dollar. So we are always aiming for 10 cents on the dollar. We do a fantastic job in the cost of reducing the cost of expenses on walk and ride. And remember, we do seven walks around the state. Other chapters might do one walk and raise $1 million. We do seven to raise $1 million, because of the geographical reach of Florida. So our costs are more than they would be in a chapter that can do just one walk, because guess what? A tent costs the same thing, whether you're doing it one time, seven times, you've got to pay for it seven times. You've got to put up the tens, you've got to put up the signs, you know, there are some just fixed costs, which is why we do want the walks to be, to raise as much money as they can, because once they're there, the walk is there, it doesn't cost anymore to have more people there. So while we're aiming for that 10 cents on the dollar, if we can always stay at 12 to 14 cents, I think that, you know, we're doing a good job there. It's certainly a far cry from numbers of other types of fundraisers. You know, it's not unusual for something like a gala or something to spend 50 cents on the dollar, you know, for their expenses, but that's not the case with the walk. The next line that you see is advocacy and awareness. Advocacy and awareness are both programs of ours. So that's a program, in the program column, because that is part of delivering our missions, part of covering all bases. We advocate in Tallahassee, we advocate on a national level. And when you think about some of the things that we have advocated for and achieved, you know, the social security disability going into effect immediately instead of a wait period, that affects every single pal in the United States, not just our Florida pals. That is money well spent. And then research. Every year, like I said, part of our revenue share goes toward research, so part of that's broken out of that revenue share line and moved down to that research line. In addition, we are always looking for donors who are willing to give to research. We are actually always looking for donors who want to give to whatever we think the donor is interested in. It could be research, it could be our clinic support, it could be patient services, it could be the assisted technology closet, it could be, you know, we want that, we want to find that donor's interest, and when we find a donor who's interested in research, then we will pursue that, and hopefully, we can raise a lot of research money. But remember how I said that we, as a chapter, are patient-centric. So we're going to take care of our patients first, and right now, we are budgeting to take care of patients, because we're on a pretty tight budget. You saw that we lost $107,000 last year. There's no money in that year to send a lot of extra money out of our unrestricted funds to our research program, because of the care that we were giving the patients. So we have to make those decisions. And, but when we find a donor who is willing to invest in research, then, then yes, we want to make sure that that money gets into our global research program. Does anybody have any questions on how we spent the money? Well, somebody has to have a question. Okay, the next, the last part of the 990 that I want to point out is our balance sheet. Our balance sheet is a listing of our assets and our liabilities. And there's a couple of numbers that I want to point out, because this is really pretty easy, even though it might not look it. On the asset side, we really have two things. Our money is in cash, and you can see those top numbers, and we own this building that we're in. So those two things, really, we don't really have any other kind of assets. On the liability side, we have the mortgage on the building. I mean, we always have some accounts payable, we always have some accounts receivables, those things are always timing issues, there's always some accruals. We're not going to get into the accounting aspects, but those are the big things to know. That we have cash, our money comes in, it goes into the bank, we have this building. We do have tenants, we rent out half of our building, the rent equals our mortgage payment. So that's a nice feature. That's a good thing. Does anybody have any questions on the assets or the liabilities? You guys are easy. Okay, the next chart shows where, when we talked about in that program services, you know, where the funds, like, how we allocate those. So when you look at something like salary, and it's just a big number, you know, where does that really go? So this chart breaks it down a little bit more, and we're always updating this. So this will get updated with our new 990. So you can see how much of that goes to education, the clinics, awareness, and public policy, all those different categories, grants, equipment. And as an example, I'm going to use the clinics as an example, and we will have Dr. Gooch speaking later, or here soon, but like on the clinics, there is a portion that's real tangible. We give, and I'm going to talk about this here in another slide, you know, we give a certain amount to the clinics in just cash, but we also provide an in-kind aspect. If anybody has been on our Hope and Help Tour, the last Hope and Help Tour we were on, I know that you were there, Gary, we saw three of our care service managers come out of a room with a patient. That's not free, that's the salary part. So we take, you know, you saw that one big number in salaries, now we break it down even further, how much, you know, so clinic support is in-kind salaries and direct money. And that's how all those programs work. The DME, the loaner equipment, the equipment doesn't leave this office on its own. And I see Annie there in the back, it's her salary that makes that equipment get to where it needs to go. And that's a big job, with a lot of equipment to track throughout the state of Florida. So the bulk of our expense in the DME, and people will often ask me, why are there expenses with the DME? It's all loaned equipment, or it's all, it's all donated, and it is donated. We have donated power chairs, we have donated equipment, and we thank, you know, our pals who have passed that on to us. But without Annie actually, and the care coordinators, managers, telling her, you know, how to, what has to happen, that equipment would sit in a warehouse. So you can kind of see then how salaries really work into program. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions on that? So the next slide that I'd like to go to. Actually, before we get to that, I want to, well, actually, let's go to this slide. Okay, so the next slide is a peer comparison. And what I've done is... Can you move this way just a little bit, Lisa?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So we can see that first column, the column on the left. So what I've done is compared, the first column is the state of Florida. Then I've looked at other chapters across the United States, and then I've done an average. So I looked at some key numbers, and these are key numbers that we often get asked questions about. So, you know, I didn't compare things like who's paying the most for electricity or anything, but these are really the key questions that constituents, not just here, but across the board, want to know, at any charity. So the first one is our revenue. We're at 1.7 million. You can see the average is 2.2 million. And I've taken, I've taken chapters that are around our size, but then I've also added in a smaller one, and I've added in a bigger one. One that we know is, you know, chapters that have a reputation for being very well-run, and so we would assume that there's a good economy there. Then I broke down the expenses. So you can see the program expenses, we're at 1.4 million. The average is 1.7 million through these peer chapters. But the important number there is the percentage of expenses. How much per dollar are we spending on program? The best charities in America spend at least 75 cents on the dollar, and actually, that number is up for debate. And I can get some more information for people on that. There has been some, some new information coming out that maybe the best charities spend, you know, that even is down to 65 cents on the dollar, but, but we're still going to go with the 75 cents on the dollar. And so we're spending 77 cents on the dollar of every dollar we raise on our program. You can see where our peers are, the average is 79 cents on the dollar. I'm real proud of that number. I mean, that really, it's not an easy feat to do. And we have a lot of people working very hard to do that, so I think that's an important number. When you look at our admin expenses, you'll see that we're 3% compared to an average of 9%. And you'll say, wow, that's great, lower. But then you look at our fundraising, we're at 20% compared to an average of 12%, not so great, higher. All that matters there is that those numbers even out. You know, we have to spend 75 cents on the dollar on our program, so as long as those two other numbers even out, we're okay. There are no real best practices or guidelines that say this much in admin and this much in fundraising. It's whatever it takes, but be spending 75 cents on the dollar on your program. Another number that comes under scrutiny is the executive director's salary. We've all heard the stories of executive directors who are paid, you know, way too much while disasters are happening and people aren't able to help them. So I've looked at, I put my salary there in the first column, and we've looked at the, at my peers. The average, my salary's $88,000, the average is $121,000 across the board. And then I've looked at other salaries and our benefits. So if that's for a total payroll, our total payroll is $884,000, the average is $981. There are no real best practices of how much of a program should be salaries or not. And the reason for that is because every charity is different. Some charities could have, like, say, the founder of a charity who is maybe rescuing animals, and they are doing all of the work and not paying themselves a salary there, and they file as a 501(c)(3), you know, that's going to have a very different look to it than something like this, where we have a professional, paid, credentialed staff delivering the services. So that's why it's, you know, there really aren't any numbers. Some programs could have, could make $5 million and have one staff person and give out the money in some way, and others could never give out money and pay, their whole program is people. So, but what I have done is looked at, I compared my salary and total, because I wanted, I wanted to look and see, you know, are we doing anything excessive? Excuse me. Are we, are we excessive in this area, are we in line in this area? So my salary as a total, a percentage of total salaries is 10%, the average is 14%. My salary as a percentage of our revenue is 5%, the average is 5%. Our total payroll as a percentage of all of our expenses is 48%, and the average is 44%. We have some as high as 58, and some as low as 39. So we're right in there. Does anybody have any questions about how we compare on a peer basis, on this peer comparison, to our other chapters? Before I leave the financials, I just want to talk real quick about Charity Navigator, because that is a, that is an online resource for charities to look, we're not quite ready for that, but, that's okay. For charities to, or for donors to look and decide, you know, look at the financial strength of different charities, and they rate, there's Charity Navigator rating, and it goes from, I guess, zero to four, four is the best. I was doing some comparison to our other charities using Tampa as a basis, because, just so that salaries were comparable, and, but we only had four four-star charities in Tampa of our size. So it's not a rating that is handed out loosely by any means. Right now, our rating is a two, we're working on getting that, to increase that. We have somebody in charge of that here in our office. Some of the reasons that it's, that it is, actually, we've already moved it up a little bit, it's almost to a three, because of things like transparency, you know, our 990 didn't have my salary listed, our 990 had a box check that, that our board did not review it before it was filed, which is not the case. Hiram can attest to that. We spend a lot of time talking about our 990 and our audit and our financials. So we're working to get that, that rating up. You can look at our balance sheet and see that we don't have a large excess of cash. So I don't know until we get that, our cash position up, you know, increase that, if we will be able to get to the four-star. We can probably get pretty close, but then we just need to really work to increase our cash position. The, what, what we usually find ourselves in is the quandary of, do we increase our cash so that we can have a good Charity Navigator rating and be financially solid, or do we give the money out to patients? When somebody needs a $200 shower chair, you know, and we're sitting on a lot of cash, it's a very difficult decision to make. So we have to really kind of balance these things, you know? Do we, we can get a four-star rating, but it would probably be a couple of years of not giving any money out to patients. And then, as a board and an organization, we'd have to make those decisions. So there's a trade-off for everything. Or we could raise more money, and we really appreciate everybody's help in that, but, yeah. Okay, so any questions on Charity Navigator? Great. Along with that, our, you know, we do have audit and financials, and our auditors issue a management letter every year, and for those of you who own a business, you're familiar with the management letter. That is where any things that they're worried about, where they will cite the organization for things that they feel, you know, need improvement. And our management letter over the last three years has been very solid, with no real material items, and just kudos from our auditors on how this business is run. And, you know, if we want that, I can post that as part of our audit on our, on our website, because I'm really proud of that also. Okay. That's good. So now I'd like to, actually, I'm going to, before we talk about our research, I'm going to introduce Dr. Gooch and, okay. Why are we bringing you up here with a chair, actually? The, I'll put you there in the middle. This is Dr. Gooch. Welcome, Dr. Gooch.
Thank you, thank you.
We're glad that you're here. And Dr. Gooch is head of the ALS Clinic at USF. And we're going to talk a little bit about how the clinic and the chapter work together, and I just want to kind of turn it over to you to talk about that a little bit. And then, you know, it's a monetary relationship, but it's more than that, it really is. Lisa, you have the little chart of the monetary part. And that's where I think the real value of this partnership is. It's not necessarily just in the monetary part, it's in the things that we're doing for patients that take us, you know, working together, a very robust relationship, and I'm going to let Dr. Gooch talk about that a little bit.
Okay, thank you. So I think I would like to go back to the beginning of the history of the start of the USF ALS Clinic, because also had a pivotal role to play in that, and, and talk about how the relationship has evolved and how it works organically. And really, it was an education to me as well. Other places that I had been, we'd had relationships with the MDAs. Other places that I had been, we'd had relationships with the MDA at Columbia and at Baylor, and I had some interaction with ALS, but not as much, nearly as much as we have had here in this partnership. So, I arrived in 2008 to Tampa, and ALS has had been a major part of my research career and my clinical career, really going back 20 years to the early 1990s. And was quite shocked to discover that really nowhere in Tampa had there ever been an academic ALS center or an academic multidisciplinary clinic. And from the very beginning of my arrival, I made it a priority to try and establish this. So, I, I, again, coming as Chair of Neurology at USF, and it was important to me from a research perspective, from a patient care perspective. I really was stunned that a city of this size, or the Cashman area, Tampa Metro, three and a half million people, had no place that ALS patients could go for multidisciplinary academic care. So, I started, but it's, it's challenging. And the biggest challenge to starting a new ALS clinic is that you have to have that initial investment that enables you to pay the salary of the people who organize the clinic. In this case, really, it's the nurse coordinator that is the key personnel. At my time, you know, I was, in my time as Chair, and, and, and we were recruiting a neuromuscular director who would help. But really, the key person where the rubber meets the road to actually put together the nuts and bolts of the clinic, following the blueprint that we'd outlined, was the nurse coordinator. And nurse coordinators of this type are in great demand. They, they don't come cheaply. So, so I started casting around for funds. I opened channels of communication with both MDA and ALS. Dara Alexander was here at that time. And, and I will tell you that the MDA itself had really no interest in establishing or being a part of an ALS clinic here in Tampa. And, you know, nothing against the MDA, but they made that very clear after about six months of discussions with them. Because I kept asking them about the ALS clinic, and finally, they said, you know what? We're really not interested in that, so let's talk about something else. So, so that was unfortunate, but, but I, I said, okay, it's up to you, so, you know, we'll move in other directions. And we were, I was talking with both ALS and MDA at the same time. I think ALS was quite happy to work with the MDA, should the MDA be interested, but they were not. So, I realized at that point that our only chance for a partnership with a national patient organization, ALS, was going to be with ALS, and it was going to be solely with ALS, because I think although there are a number of great organizations regionally around the country, the national organizations for ALS really are ALS, which has as its sole mission ALS, and the MDA, which has ALS as part of its mission, but has a lot of other things on its plate as well. So, so that being said, I then started talking to Dara. I explained the situation and said, we got to get some money to hire a nurse coordinator, because I really have to have that salary line, and it's going to take at least a year to set up the clinic. And, and we've got to have that key individual to, to get things going. And then what Dara said was, okay, I'm going to look around, and we're going to see if we can find someone who can help you. And she started working, and ALS started working. And in fact, they did find someone who we would not have found on our own. He was a person who had a great interest in ALS. Steve Blum is the person I'm talking about. Some of you may know him. His father had had ALS, had passed from ALS in the 1980s. He was, as it turned out, a USF alumnus as well. But he had, ever since his father had passed, realized the great importance of the healthcare team, and really wanted to support something in ALS, and had been giving money on a regular basis to ALS. Excuse me. Dara had conversations with him, and he explained what we were trying to do with the clinic. We had a lunch meeting. We, we laid out the plans. He said, how much do you need? I said, well, you know, with the nurse salary and benefits for 12 to 18 months, we need probably to subsidize her salary to the tune of, you know, $80,000 or $100,000. And he said, okay, I'll give $100,000 to get the clinic started. And that was how it started. So, we, we hired a nurse coordinator. As it happened, we were very fortunate at that time that we had just by, I don't think it was random chance, I think it was fate, we actually had a nurse coordinator who had had years of experience at Emory. Michael Benatar, at that time, was in the midst of this transition to the University of Miami, so he was leaving, and she happened to come down to Tampa for other reasons. And so, it was a perfect match. She was an experienced ALS coordinator who parachuted out of the sky at the precise moment that we needed her. And, and the money came at the precise moment we needed the money. And honestly, had ALS not been involved in that, we never would have connected with Steve Blum. We never would have had that money, and we might still be trying to start the ALS clinic at, at USF.
I was going to interrupt, but I just want to say that's a prime example of what I was talking about earlier, of us finding a donor who, you know, and, and going with that donor interest. And, like you said, that donor was interested in that, and so, we diverted those funds that could have been coming to the chapter, you know, into that area of interest, because that's important to our mission, making sure that the clinics are viable.
Right, absolutely key. So, so we got the clinic started, and once we did, of course, ALS, as you've already heard, does provide, is a presence in the clinic. They have a social worker. Some of you have been in clinic, you've experienced that. The social worker really helps to connect the patients with community resources, with ALS resources, equipment resources, to, to really help them deal with, with ALS, support groups, et cetera, for the caregivers and for the patients. And, and that, too, is something that really has been a service, an in-kind donation, if you will, that they've been providing for the operation of the clinic. But it didn't end there, because really, the plan was to continue to support the ALS clinic, and, and some of you know this, some of you don't. And ALS multidisciplinary care unfortunately is not really paid for by the current healthcare system that we have. I don't know, under the Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, if it's going to be any better off. I can tell you that under the current insurance plan and current Medicare/Medicaid, they pay for some things. Often, they pay, they pay less than cost. There are other things they don't pay for at all, like the nutritionist, who's really a critical part of the clinic, for instance. And so, when, every time a patient comes to the ALS clinic, the, there's a big delta for every patient for that visit. That is money that has to be found somewhere. So, the clinic runs at a deficit. And for the first, so after we got, had the founding gift, then we really have the, have the challenge of finding monies to close that funding gap. Because, as some of you may or may not be aware, academic medical centers are under really unprecedented financial pressure now. At USF, because of good fiscal management, we've managed to keep our medical school balanced over the last five years. But if you look around the country, I would say over half of medical centers are in varying degrees of financial distress and debt and deficit. So, so there's a great deal of focus now from senior leadership, the president of the university on down, on maintaining fiscal balance at the medical school. And everything we do within a department, as a department chair, is closely scrutinized by the accountants, the chief financial officers, the CEOs, who are making sure that every aspect of our operation is balanced and not losing money. And if it is losing money, we have to do tap dance and explain why, and explain how we should allow this to continue, and what's the rationale and benefit of the long-term plan. So, so the ALS clinic got started. We had the founding gift. Right after that, we had some, some additional direct support from ALS, as you see on the sheet here, in 2011 and 2012. Clinic founded in 2010, $15,000. Thereafter, Steve Blum continued his generosity and agreed to, to continue to support us, starting in 2012 going forward, with $20,000 a year gifts for at least five years. So, that helps to offset some of the expenses. And you may want to know what the delta is. The delta's $150,000 to $200,000 for our one half, one day per month clinic. That's how much it costs. Each clinic visit is, is really remarkably expensive. And the way we've, we've assembled it is we actually pay the providers out of the department's own resources to come, those that aren't otherwise reimbursed. So, so it's really the department that's absorbing that. And so, there is this big gap, funding gap, that needs to be met. So, we've been strategizing with ALS now, really since 2011, about how to close that gap. Part of it is going to be getting the national certification process going. That will help some. That was delayed, because the national chapter had its own financial challenges and put a freeze on certifying new clinics, because they didn't really have the money to support them for, as you see, several years, four years or more. But that's, that process is now starting, so we're looking forward to some support from national, which will help offset. But the other big gift, I would say that the two really big, and then you said it's not financial, but in fact, these are things that had direct financial impacts. So, the first is really the $100,000 founding gift from Steve Blum, which was shepherded entirely by ALS. The, the second piece has to do with this, the Bittner Plant Initiative. I don't know how much you talked about that early on. But, so, so we've been working with ALS. We've been, and, and, you know, I'm, I keep whining about the, the gap and the fact that, you know, the university's not going to let us do this forever. And, and, and so, we're constantly strategizing, how can we close this gap? And we had a unique opportunity, and it came, and, once again, it came entirely initially through ALS. And ALS has started these Hope and Help Tours. Some of you may have taken them over at USF, where with the USF clinic, they will bring some potential donors and people who are interested in what's going on, to see the clinic, to see the, the facilities, to see what we're doing, how the clinic operates, who the personnel are. And the point of it really is to encourage people to support the clinic operations. And we had one of these visits early on where I was going around with the group, and we happened to have Wendy Bittner. So, some of you are probably aware that Wendy Bittner's husband, Dan Bittner, died of ALS. Their state, is it Dan or David? I'm sorry. David, David Bittner, excuse me. It's been a long day. The, he passed of ALS. He was the Chair, I believe, of the Republican Party of Florida. He was beloved in the legislature. He did great work, really respected and loved on both sides of the aisle. And, and his, his wife Wendy actually works as a lobbyist, and had also a lot of relationships in Tallahassee.
She came on our board probably in 2000.
So, and, and, you know, to, just to, I think aside of the fact that USF has this close relationship with ALS, close working relationship, is the fact that Hiram, you know, has been involved with the board and is now Chairman of the Board this year for ALS, for ALS. So, so we, we had, so ALS said, they actually called me. Kim called me and said, you know, we have Wendy Bittner coming, and I was, of course, aware that her husband had, had recently passed. His ALS was rather aggressive, so he was diagnosed, and within a short period of time, he passed. So, so even though they were from, I guess, the Miami area, right?
No, in Tallahassee, but then their home was down in Port Charlotte area.
Oh, Port Charlotte, okay.
Area.
All right. So, they, despite that fact, they had a great interest really in, in what can we do? Wendy really had been through this. She had, had seen firsthand how the illness had impacted her family and herself personally. And she basically, like, like, you, all those of you in the screen, you wanted to do something about this. You know, she felt compelled to take action and do something to help people with ALS. She didn't know what, though. She really had been in, in politics and lobbying all of her career, and didn't really understand, what, what can I do to help? So, she came to the, the Hope and Help Tour. She saw what we were doing. She said, this is fantastic. And then, at the end of the tour, of course, I gave my usual whiny spiel about, we have this gap, this funding gap that we need to fill. And, and she said, wow, you know what? I would love to help, so, you know, why don't you brainstorm and, and, and give me your thoughts, and let me see if we can come up with something to help? And I said, oh, okay, great. And so, we started thinking. I sat down with the folks from ALS, and we came up with a, a plan. And I said, you know, our number one problem is this, right now, for the chapter's viability, is this funding gap. And multidisciplinary care, you know, dramatically helps the patients, not only psychologically and their families, their caregivers, but it actually prolongs life. It has all these benefits, and so, you know, my, my number one priority right now is to keep the clinic running and make sure we can continue to offer multidisciplinary care and not be shut down because of the deficit. And she said, okay, is that the way it is all around the state? I said, yeah. I said, all of these centers have to find additional funds to, to close this gap. And so, she said, okay, great. And I said, I'll tell you what. Let me get together with my fellow directors of ALS clinics, academic ALS clinics from around the state, which we did, and, and let me propose to them that, that we, you know, have you go to the legislature with a request, that the legislature help to fund this gap for not just USF, but really all the ALS clinics in Florida, for ALS care in Florida. And she said, okay, that, that's, that sounds like something I can sell. And I said, let's do it. So, we actually then started, she started doing her thing, and then took the ball from there, and went, went to Tallahassee with ALS at her side. And they really did a, a great job of communicating to legislators the terrible nature of this disease. They got so sympathetic here because of Mr. Bittner's passing and, and the fact that he had to have such great friends and respect up there. And, and they, they listened, and they crafted a proposal, which became the Bittner Plant Initiative. It was shepherded by Wendy and by ALS. USF's lobbyists also helped, as did some of the lobbyists from some of the other institutions. But I think USF was the lobbyist, were the, the most help among all the lobbyists, from what I've heard. I'm just a little blurred, but anyway.
Well, I won't dispute that, then.
Okay. So, they, they actually were successful in getting this initiative passed. And as a consequence, all of the, the major academic ALS centers in Florida, which represents UF Shands, Mayo Clinic, University of Miami, and USF, now have for this year support sufficient to close that funding gap.
And increase capacity.
And increase capacity. So, part of the deal was that we would not only, we would provide some offset of the funding gap, but we would agree to increase the number of visits by a substantial margin. So, at, at USF, that's translated into us opening another full day per month. We have two full days per month, the multidisciplinary clinic, which was great, because we had about a six-month backlog to get into the clinic. We really had a lot of patients. It's really been a great success in terms of the number of patients we've had. It's grown very quickly. We, I don't know what the, the latest numbers are, but I think it's over 300 patients, which is quite a bit for an ALS clinic. So, so that was huge. And that actually comes in a very timely fashion, because the fiscal pressures for the, the university are substantial, and, and it's really important to, for me to be able to show a ballot spreadsheet to my bosses, so that they're not going to be breathing down our necks to close the multidisciplinary ALS clinic. And coming back to the first principles, this all happened because ALS brought Wendy Bittner to USF. And, you know, I've learned to, to develop more and more trust of ALS. I'm, I'm, I'm a collaborative kind of guy, but, you know, I'm like, kind of like the old Reaganism, trust but verify. So, so I was always wondering, you know, jeez, I don't know, is, is this going to work out? Is ALS in it for themselves? What's going to happen? And, and in this particular case, this was an instance where ALS could have, had they so desired, steered Wendy Bittner completely away from USF and from the other clinics, and said, you know what? ALS has its own financial problems.
And we do.
And, and, and challenges, and the economy's tough. And, you know, you, if you really want to help ALS, just, you know, what you need to do is, is, you know, find, get a bunch of your rich donors up in Tallahassee to give us a bunch of money. And Wendy might have done that, instead of doing this initiative. But instead, ALS really put, directed her to, to work with us and work with ALS to, to put this together. Now, ALS, ALS is the broker of the deal, and they're the ones that are, are accounted, they're playing accountant in this situation.
Manager of the...
To, to report to the state for all the four centers. But their administrative fee for this is miserably, really, is very tiny. And so, so I, you know, I salute them for that. And that's, it's a complicated, long story, but, but it's important, I think, to understand how the partnership is working. So, you know, for me, again, the number one priority, first and foremost, is to continue to be able to provide multidisciplinary care in, in the major academic centers in Florida for ALS patients here. And, and honestly, without ALS and USF anyway, I'm not sure we would even have gotten started by this point, number one. Number two, we might not have been able to maintain it. And it's really the, the people that they have brought to us through their network of supporters that have made it possible for us to work with those folks, to become donors, to work with the generosity of the legislature, to help to care for ALS patients in Florida. So, so that's the clinical side. There's a research side, and I wanted to address that, too. So, the, the research side is, is a bit, a bit complex in that there are, and let me talk first about what ALS does research-wise, and so you understand it. And what ALS does is ALS has a, a research arm, if you will, that, that operates in the way that many national organizations do, which is that they take a portion of the monies that they collect nationally to support the research enterprise. They have a scientific board, which then tries to develop a unified strategy to go after ALS in certain ways and to support certain kinds of research, really around the world. And this is really a national-level approach. This is the strategy that they've chosen to pursue. It has the advantages of being strategic, being able to be guided by a sort of global strategy on the part of the advice of the scientific board. The disadvantages are that it is centralized. It's not necessarily, you know, a local shop-by-shop sort of operation. So, but this is the way the MDA does business and the way that a lot of other research organizations do business, pretty standard among national patient advocacy organizations. In fact, I would say every national patient organization that I work with In fact, I would say every national patient organization that I work with does their research and handles their research program in this way. It's pretty standardized. Now, having said that, I also want to say that, you know, the ALS operations in any academic medical center, including our own, are sort of intrinsically bound together with the clinical operations, because we have the same people doing both things. So, for instance, our nurse coordinator in the ALS clinic, well, she also helps us to coordinate our clinical trials. So, she helps to record the data for the clinical trials and, you know, take patient blood samples and do things of that nature, in addition to running the clinic and helping to provide multidisciplinary care. So, it's very difficult to sort of parse out, you know, that, okay, this person's doing this, this admixture, sometimes on the same patient in the same visit, a clinic visit and a research visit, and they're really doing two things simultaneously, and it's very hard to parse out, you know, exactly how much is research effort, exactly how much is clinical effort. They're all intermingled in a way that's integrated. And without having the, really, the support of most of this money, the cost of the clinic goes primarily to salaries, and not the doctor's salaries, by the way, just so you know. I mean, we're not, in fact, we take a hit on the doctor's salaries, we do that intentionally, because we want to help the clinic to be viable. But it's really the nurse salaries, the occupational physical therapy salaries, you know, speech therapy salaries, those are the ones that we need to pay and subsidize, and those people, many of those people are involved in our research programs integrally, including, at our place, we have a fabulous doctor of speech therapy who's doing a wonderful program in respiratory exercise training, which is having a real impact on patient survival by our initial research that we've done so far. So, when ALS helps us to pay the salaries of our nurse coordinator, you know, and our speech therapist, and these other people involved in the clinic, they're also really undergirding the foundations of the research program, because the research program is primarily not, for the most part, not test tubes and things like that, but actually the salaries of the people who are doing the research. And so, it's an indirect way in which ALS helps support research. So, there are, you know, people who are, you know, if people are bound and determined that they want to support a local research program at USF, there are ways to do that. But the, but I think it's not really correct to think that because you gave your money to ALS, and you're from Tampa, and you want to help USF, that it's not helping USF, and that it's not helping to subsidize research at USF, because it is. It's just not a matter of them cutting us a check that says at the bottom, you know, on the subject line, "For research at USF." Instead, it says, "Support of the multidisciplinary ALS clinic," or, "We bring you a donor," and that donor gives you big money, or the state sends money to support the clinic, so it's not a deficit, so we don't have to lay off a bunch of people who are otherwise doing research, too. So, we, so this is the way in which ALS helps us. So, it's kind of an integrated partnership, and it's kind of complicated, it's hard to just sit there and be talking for whatever, 15 or 20 minutes. It takes a while to explain it all, and I, it's easy, I think, to get misconceptions about the whole thing. But that's the whole story, and that's kind of how ALS has partnered with us. So, you know, we're very grateful to have ALS involved, and we're, you know, we are really dependent upon them and have benefited greatly from their efforts, especially when they take people that they could have taken donations and contributions from major donors, major state initiatives themselves, and said, "Hey, you know what? Here's a big potential supporter, why don't you give your money to USF?" And so, that's happened, you know, twice. You see the numbers, there's a hundred thousand plus a twenty thousand times five, that's two hundred thousand. And then the state initiative, it's not donor money, but it's state money, and that's going to be, we don't know exactly where it's going to land, but probably three, you know, three hundred-ish. So, you put all that together, and that's in the last four or five years, well, I guess from 2010 to 2014, it's a half million dollars that you're talking about, that the unit has really gotten by way of ALS's efforts. And honestly, without it, we would, I don't think we would have made it. I mean, the clinic probably wouldn't have gotten started. If it had gotten started, it might have just stuttered and shut down, because it would have had too much writing on the ledger when the big guys looked at it. So, that's.
I love your, go ahead, Hi-Ram.
One of the things I do want to say with Dr. Gooch, in terms of Wendy, Wendy's also on the Board of Directors, and that's someone you don't see on board that's around, that's very supportive of what he's saying. One of the things that we wanted to do is think out of the box, not do the same thing that we've always done, you know, as always done, but the collaboration between ALS and USF is a little different. And Dr. Gooch, we had to certainly earn his trust, but at the same time, it was something that we knew that we had to do in order to help the patients. And the bottom line, our goal is to help the patients, and by forming the relationship and doing the things we've done through Wendy and the initiative that she created, and also with Dara earlier, when she got Dr. Steve Blum involved, all of that was part of a process that the board, that you don't see, because Wendy came on board later, is all part of the process of moving this organization forward, and we're happy to be part of that.
I couldn't say that better, and when you say like dependent, we're dependent, too, because definitely, this relationship is definitely a mutually dependent, mutually beneficial relationship, because of the, how critical it is for our pals to go to clinic. I mean, the research is just, you know, shows that they can extend life, and that's why we've made it a very important part of our mission. I think that you've seen how hard it is to make some of these decisions, patient care, research, clinic, pay a care coordinator, or don't pay a care coordinator, and put more money into direct cost to patients. It's a balancing act, and it's an act that we do it every single day, and we are trying to cover all bases. That's why you won't ever see our financials all in one area. All our money won't go to the clinic, all our money won't go to research, all our money won't go to the care managers. It's spread out. And ALS is a disease that you really have to attack with that kind of, with that kind of plan, because who knows what's going to be helpful and how we're going to make a difference, so. Dr. Gooch talked on the research, or touched on the research, and I just want to say, thank you for explaining to our global program, saved me from doing that, and I appreciate that, because you're very well aware of it, but there are handouts over here about our global research program, so please take one with you. And I think that, probably, since we're running out of time, I do want to ask if there's any questions, so that we don't go over on time before we close.
I have one question, Kim. What did you do before, you probably told me, and I forgot, so apologies, what did you do before you were an ALS coordinator?
Before, are you talking me personally?
Yeah.
My, me? Didn't know, I thought you were going to say, "Before we had a clinic." Yeah. I've worked in the nonprofit field since about 1994, both in fund development and as executive director of an independent nonprofit that worked with deaf children. Before that, I was a banker, and as a banker, I found that I really liked being on the board of local community charities, and I liked the work in the community much better than crunching the financials. So, I was very much drawn to that, to something that's more mission-oriented.
And I do want to say one word about the leadership of ALS, because, you know, Dara Alexander was, many of you may have known her, she was terrific, and she was kind of the heart and soul of ALS for a long, long time, 15, 20 years, something like that. And so, when she decided to retire after, you know, really having gone above and beyond, there was a great deal of anxiety in the Tampa chapter about what was going to happen. And to be honest, we then had some leadership that was not ideal, although the leadership we had at that time was, I think it was a person who had, you know, the best intentions, but there were some rocky roads there for a period of time. And then, when Kim came after that period of instability, I'll call it, I think she really stabilized the organization and made a difference, a real difference, in terms of making it a viable, workable, organized unit that we could go to and have discussions with and have productive dialogue with, that we knew was going to take us in the right direction. And I, so I was very relieved when she took the helm and when it became apparent that she was going to bring this kind of organization to ALS here in Tampa. And, you know, I think that, and I'm not sure if there are any other chapters who have, you know, who have organized an event like this, where they're coming forward with things. I know there's been a lot of questions about exactly what's going on, and I think this kind of transparency is great. You know, we try to do this at USF. Of course, we're state employees under the sunshine law, so, you know, if you want to ask for our emails or hard drives, you know, or cell phones, whatever, they're yours. So, but I think it's, I think transparency is a good thing, though.
It is.
I think it's, this is really excellent, and I think this should, you know, maybe become a regular sort of event. Where, you know, you come forward and they're, offer you some questions, and the financial information is presented, I think this builds a lot of trust and helps people to understand exactly what's going on.
We plan on doing a town hall meeting about every six months, so. Any other questions, Sol? That was a good one. Okay, well, I think we are out of time anyway, so I want to thank everybody for coming. Hi-Ram, do you have any closing remarks that you want to?
No, just thank everybody for coming, and let everybody know about this, the meeting, next time, the next six months or so. And the information will be on the website, all of the information we talked about.
Yes, there'll be a link to the recording, to the video. And Dr. Gooch, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. So, okay, good night.